Good evening and welcome. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees has now convened in a board of work session on Thursday, September 4th. Tonight, we're going to review the portion of the Monday, September 8th regular board meeting agenda, designated as action items, and here designate reports and recognitions posted in the meeting as noted required by Texas law. I'd like to welcome our members of the audience and those who are viewing online to meet the board trustees. We are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. It's not the role of the board to make day-to-day operation decisions. That management of the day-to-day operations district is responsible as superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to make those issues. Prior to the meeting, board members have received information relating to items on the agenda. The items on the agenda may not represent exactly as handled in the order listed in the notice. During the meeting, the board may determine that closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for the meeting to be permitted by sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on district website, also available on the district website tonight following tonight's meeting. For the meeting to accurately reflect proceedings, I respectfully ask you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and your cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking time to join us this evening in your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Tonight, we have Grace Hanley from Dr. Tom Oliverson's office here. Thank you, Grace, for being here. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, recognitions, awards, announcements, board comments, and suspicion would present the regular board meeting on Monday, September 8th. Well, now we'll start with public comments. Per B E D local, individuals may rest aboard on public comments items. Individuals must register online in advance. Registration opens on the agenda posted on district website and the deadline is 12:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Tonight, we have Jonathan Cohen. Would you like to come forward, please? You all have two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Board of Directors. I'm here tonight. Harris County had, or Harris Central Appraisal District, had an emergency vacancy and we are trying to go off and fill that vacancy. I'm asking for your guys' nomination for that position for it's completely separate than the election that's going on with them on it. This is to replace Cassandra Ozam Bambi, who was representing H I S D but had to step down for some various different reasons. I've was previously on the H C A D Board of Directors. I stepped down due to my position being eliminated by the legislature in the last session and so I'm able to really understand and grasp what's going on for it. I'm a resident of Cyfair. I've been here for since 2012. I've had my daughters a student at Anthony Middle School where she loves psychology and various other different activities they have. I've also been very active and love it and I was able to do it this year with Bus Buddies for it. I've done that program for several years with Mrs. Akers over at Renell Elementary. So tonight, I'm just here to ask you guys, please consider my nomination for it. I would really be grateful to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now continue with the reports portion of the agenda. 7A, the administration provided update on the law. Excuse me, that's been skipped. Will now be done on Monday night. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. 7B, the administration provided report on the 2025 STAR 3 through 8 and, of course, results. Dr. Gory?
Good evening, President Henry, Dr. Killian and Board of Trustees. Tonight, we are pleased to share our 2025 STAR E O C and Accountability Results, which show substantial gains across several areas, which is a reflection of the hard work of our students, our teachers, and the support of our curriculum and instruction team. Dr. Ashley Claiborne will present this information.
Tonight, we begin by noting that the data will be shared, the data that will be shared in this presentation, along with additional data points, are available for C F I S D to view on the T X schools.gov website. This site provides accountability and testing data for all districts and campuses across the state of Texas. Before you now are Accountability to Data for Cypress Fairbanks I S D, along with the five largest districts in Texas and other surrounding school districts. Beginning on the left-hand side, you will see the following columns. The name of the district, the total number of students enrolled in each district for 24-25, the percent of economically disadvantaged students in each district for 24-25. Please note that the districts were sorted from highest to lowest economically disadvantaged populations. Next, you will see the district's 2025 Accountability Rating, followed by the total number of schools in each district. After this, you will see the number and percent of A, B, C, D, or F rated campuses for each district. As you can see, Cypress Fairbanks has the highest rating when compared to districts with similar or larger economically disadvantaged populations. Furthermore, we are the only district in this same group that does not have any D or F rated campuses. We would like to commend our teachers and campus administrators for their diligent work in educating our students, as evidenced in these Accountability Ratings. This year, our goal is for all campuses to earn an A or B overall rating. As part of the state Accountability System, campuses can earn distinction designations in the following areas. Academic achievement in reading, English Language Arts, mathematics, science, and social studies. Top 25% in comparative academic growth. Top 25% in comparative closing the gaps. And post-secondary readiness. Each campus is assigned to a unique comparison group of 40 schools from anywhere in the state that closely match the target school. Distinctions are then awarded based on performance that is in the top quartile of the comparison group. Campuses earning one or more of these distinction designations met rigorous criteria to earn the highest level of recognition in the state Accountability System. The data displayed now includes the name of the district, the total number of students enrolled in each district for 24-25, and the percent of economically disadvantaged students in each district. Next, you will see the total number of schools in each district, followed by the total number of designations earned in each district. Again, we commend our teachers and campus administrators for earning these distinction designations based on outstanding student achievement. We will now transition to reviewing the STAR and E O C data that were used to compile the Accountability Ratings. Before you now are the combined 2024-25 STAR 3 through 8 Reading Language Arts, English 1, and English 2 performance data. Beginning on the left-hand side, you will see the following. The names of the comparison districts, along with the state and region. The total number of students enrolled in each district for 24-25, and the percent of economically disadvantaged students in each district. Next, you will see the combined 24-25 STAR 3 through 8 Reading Language Arts, English 1 and English 2 performance data for the state, region, and the comparison districts at the approaches, meets, and masters levels. As you can see, Cypress Fairbanks outperformed the state, region 4, and many of our surrounding districts at each performance level. Before you now are the combined 2024-25 STAR 3 through 8 Math and Algebra 1 Performance Data. This table is formatted exactly like the one we just reviewed. Once again, Cypress Fairbanks outperformed the state, region 4, and many of our surrounding districts at each performance level. Here, we have the combined 24-25 STAR 5th and 8th Grade Science and Biology Performance Data. Please note that Cyfair outperformed the state, region 4, and many of our surrounding districts at each performance level. Finally, the combined 2024-25 STAR 8th Grade Social Studies and U.S. History Data. Cypress Fairbanks I S D again outperformed the state, region 4, and many of our surrounding districts at each level. As we wrap up the data portion of our presentation, we would like to once again commend our students, teachers, and campus administrators for the work they put in during the 24-25 school year, resulting in our overall 85% Accountability Rating and STAR and E O C performance.
We are very proud of the progress our district has made and we know there's still room to grow. Our CNI team worked hard this summer on the curriculum review process and moving forward, we are still continuing to focus on some key things. Strengthening first-time instruction, increasing academic rigor and discourse, providing targeted professional development, and deepening personalized coaching. We know that this will be, this will result in our teachers, students, and campuses having even greater success in 25-26. We are now available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Julie, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate our campuses, especially the campus leaders that are here with us personally, that we, it's wonderful that we have the chance to thank you in person today, but also all the teachers and the support teams who work so hard to achieve these incredible results for our district. Dr. Lee has also shared information with us by campus and the number of schools that increase their scores by over five points, like it's incredible, the growth since last year. So kudos to, to campus leaders and to support staff and to students and teachers for all their hard work. We're very, very proud of you.
Thank you. I also want to echo appreciation. Principalship's an incredibly tough job and so each of you guys have really been able to accelerate your scores and also just to move attendance is an incredible act. I want to thank, I know that there's been very concerted effort out of, in a really collaborative way with school leadership out of some of the schools that were in danger of being a D or an F, and some made such potential growth. So the fact that there are no Ds and Fs with our economically disadvantaged populations being so challenging in some places so high, I just want to just commend the, every last person who runs a school with those challenges and had to face it. I was out of campus visits and Dr. Gory, just every team, there were people on the floor and the ground just making sure kids got what they needed, using the data, caring about kids, and so I just want to commend everyone for that. I think that 30% masters in Reading Language Arts, that's really headed in the right direction. And that 30% in the social studies area, the U.S. History, I know that we were actually just completed an exercise for our superintendent evaluation, so I got to read a little bit about math and there were some really interesting things that happened in middle school math and I'm just, I'm intrigued, but I also saw that when you've said the things you're going to work on between the good first instruction and that really looking at the professional development and the supports and the personalized coaching, I just think that's really promising. Those strategies should be what can make a difference for our kids and I just want to even say, like, there's a little school that just maybe six houses down from my house, 25 years in my house, maybe six houses down is the school and my property values just went up because that school's an A. And so I just want to congratulate every one of you. And then we have, you know, just what do you, ooh, every school that is able to accomplish that, I know what it takes as far as your team working together. It takes all of you, every last person, and so I just want to, you guys for attendance, but also those for your performance, just take it back to your teams to say that, as Julie stated, the board recognizes and understands and we're here to remove obstacles so that you can get that work done. And so we definitely appreciate everyone and we look to see our math scores. I know we have a new adoption. We've been, had it, probably heard on our ASVP committee update next Monday, but do you know that the, there's been a big team and many of your people that you nominated as principals to work on really giving feedback to our math curriculum to see that we, to see what can, what's possible. So thank you for your report. Thank you for everyone's hard work.
I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been shared, just saying thank you so much for everything that y'all do pouring into our students and making such a difference to encourage your staff, doing the big data digs that you've done and to just to hold the level of excellence so high. You can just see how all the campuses, the majority of the campuses, you know, all of our high schools improved their STAR scores, the majority of middle schools improved or maintained, and the super majority of elementary schools improved or maintained their STAR scores. And we know it's not just about the test. We know it's about our teachers pouring into our students and loving on them and helping them to be such well-rounded students in our community. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Gory. Dr. Gory is the epitome of academic achievement and so she, it's from the leadership on down. And so I thank you for the excellence that you bring and expect in what you deliver and y'all are delivering and so thank you so much for everything that you're doing. God bless you.
I just want to echo those sentiments as well. That's, you guys flat out just got the job done last year. So looking forward to improving on these numbers, but I can't stress enough, these are just outstanding results and it's a testament to the job that you guys do on a day-to-day basis. The energy and effort that everyone puts in for the school district, you know, just visiting, visiting the campuses, seeing the, the energy level that, that all the, all the teachers have, it's infectious. And so I just, again, for those in the audience, those viewing at home, you've got an outstanding school district and outstanding leadership and Dr. Killian, way to go. Dr. Gory, nice job as well.
And just to keep it short and sweet, thank you, team. It's great work and it's, it's humbling every time I get out to a campus and just see the passion, the mission field, so to speak, of all the teachers caring about the kids and we could all regale you with stories and you guys know them all because you're there every single day. And, but it's just, it's truly, frankly, it's humbling and I love seeing good fruit come from it and congratulations.
I didn't know everybody had to speak. No, but no, it's, it's my honor as well and I don't have much to add, just thank you very much and I appreciate all your hard work, look forward to seeing some of you guys on campus. Thank you very much.
I was going to say, thank you, Dr. Claiborne, thank you, Dr. Gory, and thank you all as well, all of, all of our staff that put this in. I know moving the goalpost every year is, makes it hard and we appreciate all the hard work. Thank you so much. You have a comment too? You got FOMO?
Look, here. I just want to say to all the staff members, thank you for the nights, the long nights, the grading, the lesson planning, the team planning, all the time away from family, all the stress that's involved in this test for principals, instructional specialists, all the coaches that are out there. I know that, that the accountability is a one-day thing for a test, but it's an all-day event for us and I just really appreciate all the work. It, it just shows what, what went into this last year and you add on the top of that the amount of cuts we had to endure, the amount of extra work, all the, the hands that weren't there to help and thank you, really appreciate that.
Irene, you want to say something? No. Just go ahead. Keep going. All right. 7C, the administration provided an update on the progress of the student services guard rail 1 and strategic plan. Dr. Stewart?
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Ogumake works her way down to the podium, we are here to present a report on objectives 2 and 3 in guard rail 1 and goal 8 of the district improvement plan, specifically focusing on P B I S and attendance. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Ogumake.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Good evening, Dr. Killian, President Henry, and Board of Trustees. I will begin my, my presentation this evening with Performance Objective 3, which Dr. Stewart shared, is about maintaining a positive behavior interventions and support program on our campuses or any other research-based school-wide behavioral support system. The Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, or P B I S, like we call it, is a research-based proactive system for managing behavior that enables campuses to develop a school-wide common language and expectations for student behavior and it's tailored to the specific needs of the campus. Campuses use a matrix to teach and reinforce desired behaviors throughout the school and in the classrooms. P B I S focuses on proactive and preventative behavior management strategies. This systemic and strategic approach, if implemented with fidelity, creates positive, predictable, and safe learning environments with a common purpose. When students practice and understand what is expected in any area of the school, especially in class, the likelihood of misbehavior decreases significantly, allowing teachers to focus more on first-time instruction for all students. C F I S D schools began implementing P B I S during the 2006 school year. I am pleased to share that we're edging closer to our goal of 100% implementation as 88 of our 91 comprehensive campuses and our special campuses have now adopted the P B I S system. This includes all of our elementary schools, all of our middle schools, and nine of our 12 high schools. Three high schools, Bridgeland High School, Cypresswood High School, and Jersey Village High School, report that they are using a campus-developed program to manage student behavior. However, I am very excited to share that Principal Rich Dixon at Bridgeland High School is working with his staff and they're considering joining the P B I S cadre next year. So that's great news for us. In February, a survey was administered to principals to gather their perspectives on the impact of P B I S on their campuses. Seventy-one of our principals responded. Among those who responded, 99% reported that P B I S had a positive or significantly positive impact on their campus and you can read some of their comments right there on the screen. Right now, I would like to take a moment to share some of, so you can hear from some of our principals describing the impact of P B I S on their campus culture and climate.
Adam was one of the first schools to start the P B I S program. We've had P B I S here for over 15 years. It's really ingrained in our culture and it's not just our students and staff that feel that, it's visitors when they come in the building, they will speak to the culture of friendliness, of kindness, and how we are welcoming to everyone. Our parents are included as well in our P B I S program. One of our subcommittees in our P B I S committee deals directly with parent communication. We send out the matrices that we teach to students so that parents can reinforce that as well, a way to bridge the gap between school and home.
Since we have implemented P B I S on our campus, there's a fire that started with our staff and you can see it in our staff, you hear it in the hallways, you can feel it. Our student discipline was cut in half. This year, we have even noticed during our first week that we have had zero major incidents and that is a direct result of our P B I S system. When you walk into our classrooms, you'll see our P B I X matrix right next to the door. It's a teaching tool and not just a poster. Our teachers use it to pre-teach, redirect, and reinforce behaviors and our teachers practice it just like our students practice it.
Our teachers are the ones that know our students best. They know what our kids want, they know what helps motivate them, and so just by those incentives that they build into their classrooms and those daily rewards is what helps get P B I S going. This just helps set students for success by reinforcing those behaviors that we want to see. So many times, kids are told, don't do this, don't do that, but we just want to emphasize, hey, you are doing this, you're doing a great job at it, continue doing it and we see you.
Now, I will report on Performance Objective 2, which is to increase the student attendance rate to 95% or to show improvement from the prior year. Student Services supports the district and campuses in maintaining a strong student attendance rate, recognizing the positive correlation between student attendance. Recognizing the positive correlation between student attendance, academic success, and district funding, we continue to intensify our efforts in this area. Although we have not reached 95%, we have seen incremental growth in student attendance. This chart shows our progress over the last three years. We are excited about the 0.22% growth in 2024-25. This will result in invaluable instructional benefits for our student and roughly 1.65 million in additional funding for the district. To bolster student attendance, Student Services has worked to build a multifaceted attendance campaign. Our "When You Miss School, You Miss Out" attendance campaign is designed to be a comprehensive approach that tackles the varied reasons students miss school while reinforcing positive habits through recognition and support. By engaging families, staff, students, and community partners, the campaign encompasses five aspects. First, we have set clear targets and a purpose. With the district goal of 95% or better, a 1% increase generates 7.5 million in funding. Secondly, we ensure that we have consistent messaging. With our "When You Miss School, You Miss Out" campaign, we have posters that will be distributed to the campuses, and we're constantly sending messages out there, social media. Our principals help with that a lot. Thirdly, we support our campuses with a data-driven tiered intervention approach. We use our attendance data dashboard, we send out weekly emails, we use the attendance tracking system, and constantly share comparative data reviews. The fourth component of the plan is staff ownership and the process through training, which includes training on the attendance-taking and the student attendance accounting handbook, and reviewing board policy and regulations. Our final but quite important component is to ensure that we provide ongoing recognition and incentives to campuses that show incremental growth or attendance champions because they met or surpassed the district target. Now, let's take a moment to review a short, student-focused message from the spring of 2024.
Hi, CFISD. When you miss school, you miss out. Just like a big game, you don't want to miss a single play. Showing up at school every day means being part of the winning team.
We're in the tournament, and every game counts. Just like basketball, attendance is all about teamwork. Students, parents, and staff all working together to reach the top.
We have a championship mindset. Showing up to school every day is the way to win. Attendance is important, and it means we're all playing on the same team. When you miss school, you miss out.
Together, we're all the way up. Remember, when you miss school, you miss out.
Okay. As part of the recognition aspect of our campaign this evening, we are pleased to celebrate 35 CFISD campuses for their outstanding work with student attendance during the 2024-25 school year. And I have to say, 31 of these campuses met the district target of 95%. So, we will begin with our first group of campuses that saw exponential growth in their student attendance rate. Utilizing data to identify trends and create plans, each of these campuses increased their overall attendance rate by more than 1% for the 2024-25 school year. Please join me in congratulating... Please join me in congratulating Bang Elementary School. You would please come up. Danish Elementary School with a 1% increase. For the second year in a row, Holbrook Elementary School with a 1.16% increase. And Cypress Springs High School with a 1.84% increase. These campuses are still working toward that district target of 95%, but have demonstrated outstanding effort in helping students and their families build strong patterns of attendance and increasing the attendance rate for their campuses. Please congratulate them one more time. Next, we would like to recognize campuses for their commitment to meeting the district attendance target with an overall rate of 95% or higher for the 2024-25 school year. Please join me in congratulating Berks Elementary School. Come on up. Black Elementary School. Brosnahan Elementary School. Farney Elementary School. Fraser Elementary School. Hair Grove Elementary School. Hamilton Elementary School. Lowry Elementary School. Posma Elementary School. Aragon Middle School. Goodson Middle School. And Hamilton Middle School. These principals are representing their respective learning communities whose commitment to regular school attendance has previously been highlighted in our weekly Tuesday updates and on the district's social media. But tonight, we are thrilled to have you help us publicly recognize their collective efforts to achieve an overall attendance rate of 95% or better, which allows our students to stay on the path to amazing. Please clap for them again. Thank you, principals. Thank you. Finally, we are excited to recognize 19 campuses that were highlighted for achieving the district target, ending an overall attendance rate of 95% or higher for the 2024-25 school year. But more impressively, these campuses were also district attendance champions for all six reporting periods for the 2024-25 school year. Please join me in congratulating Alt Elementary School. Bird Elementary School. Copeland Elementary School. Gleason Elementary School. Keith Elementary School. McGowan Elementary School. Pope Elementary School. Renell Elementary School. A Robison Elementary School. Sampson Elementary School. Swinkie Elementary School. Warner Elementary School. Wells Elementary School. Woodard Elementary School. Anthony Middle School. Salyard's Middle School. Smith Middle School. Spillane Middle School. And Sprague Middle School. These principals are representing their respective learning communities whose commitment to strong patterns of effort have also been highlighted in our Tuesday updates and on the district's social media. But tonight, we are overjoyed to have you help us publicly recognize them and their collective efforts to hit, I think you only did. And their collective efforts to hit the district target. There you go. Their effort to hit the district target and achieve a 95% student attendance rate for all six PIMS reporting periods. We call them our attendance super champions, so please, one more round for them. Thank you, principals. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. This brings me to the end of my presentation. We want to thank our awesome principals, their staff, students, parents, and guardians for this concerted effort with this goal. I also want to say a special thank you to Student Services Directors, Dr. Jason Butler and Tamika Presley, for their commitment and work in supporting our campuses and ensuring that this very important target remains in daily focus. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to recognize these learning communities and their remarkable achievements. Thank you.
And love going around again. We're just gonna take a quick break so we can come down and say thank you in person. So, thank you very much, that way you can escape. So, a five-minute break. With the following items, one board member may request to have these items reviewed individually and addressed on, voted on individually. If any board member has a question regarding an agenda item, please ask me to recognize while I read through these. 8A, minutes from August 11th. 8B, second ridding additions for 8B1, EHBC. 8B2, EHBCA. 8C, execution agreement between Texas A&amp;M and Cypress Fairbanks ISD. 8D, authorization for the affiliation agreement between College of Liberal Arts and Social Studies and Disorders from University of Houston. 8E, authorizing superintendent execute between University of Houston-Clerk Lake and Cypress ISD. 8F, approving construction projects and contracts for 8F1 Campbell Middle School, Cyrenchee High School, Jersey Village High School, and the Berry Center chiller replacements. 8G, Board consider awarding bids, contracts, and authorizing purchases for 8G1 special ed bus purchase. In 8H, Board consider authorizing agreement with Epic Health Services. Seeing no questions, we'll now proceed with the non-consent agenda items. 9A, the Board consider taking... 9A, the Board consider taking action on the resolution to nominate the candidate for fill vacancy for Board Director Harris County Appraisal District. Any discussion on this? Nope. We'll take a vote on that, I think, believe, coming up soon. So, you have that information in your email if you don't have that. 9B, the Board consider taking action on the resolution to nominate two candidates for position Board Director Harris County Appraisal District. I believe you received that as well in your email if you haven't, tech to Holly. 9C, the Board consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, deletions, deductions. 9C1, FFG local student welfare, child abuse, and neglect. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. I do just have a couple of comments regarding policy -- local policy FFG. I just want to make note that the revisions to local policy FFG are required by new state laws that were passed this spring, specifically HB 1106, HB 1151, and SB 571. I do have some concerns regarding the legislations, specifically that the legislation removes state-certified law enforcement that can most quickly investigate allegations of child abuse and sexual abuse of a child and trafficking, because it does remove the ability for Cypress Fairbanks ISD police to investigate these allegations. Thus, this delays action in protecting our children. I'll also note that as trustees and as a public school district, we must follow state law even if they endanger children.
I just wanted to say to our police officers here and also watching, and also our police chief, we did testify on this piece, and we totally support our police officers and their ability to investigate these things in a timely manner. They're actually quite a bit faster than other agencies, and it's overwhelming to try to put it on other agencies to do, and they do such an effective job of doing it. So, very disappointed to see that pass, and so I just wanted to tell our police officers that we do trust and believe in you, and yeah, thank you.
Okay, 9D, the Board will receive legal advice from General Counsel.
I'm sorry. I have a question. I'm not sure who to direct it to. Scott, I'd like to just know on clarification, we can still use our police force for this? No?
No.
According to, it says, a state or local law enforcement agency as defined by that?
I think Marty presented this to our policy committee. Can you just go briefly over that, I heard a question?
Okay. That's the part. Okay.
Yes, Christine, to your point, it's confusing, the way that it reads. And so, what that particular bill addresses is the provisions under Chapter 261 of the Family Code regarding reporting of suspected abuse or neglect for the purpose of investigating, to Ms. Heinemann's point. I will tell you, our Chief of Police and other -- well, and to be more clear, so everyone who's not looking at what's in front of you knows, so what the statute was revised to say, that in certain circumstances, that report can be made to state or local law enforcement agencies as follows, and it lists, you know, counties, sheriffs, et cetera. It specifically does not include, therefore excludes, ISD police departments. And so, because it's inclusive, these are the ones who can, but not being on that list implicitly, cannot be the ones who initially receive, and then with the expectation of investigating. I will tell you that our Chief of Police, as well as other ISD Chiefs of Police, you know, have been conferring on this bill. I've worked directly with the chief on it and his command staff and our wonderful officers. I will tell you that local, non-ISD law enforcement all understand and greatly respect our police force. I mean, we hired Chief Mendez away for a reason, and so he is highly respected, as is all of our officers. And so, working with other law enforcement agency leaders, I do believe what will end up occurring is that if there is a report made, other agencies have indicated because of their confidence in our agency, they will likely refer those to us and ask us to investigate. So, the statute would allow that. And so, I do think that that is likely going to occur, at least with agencies like ours that are highly efficient and very well-respected.
So, for example, if the law enforcement, the constable's office has an issue, they could refer to our ISD police, and they could handle that matter because they've referred it to them?
Yes, they have overlapping jurisdiction, and so they can actually, you know, refer it to them, and I do think that that will occur quite often.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Tell you, so in the discussion at the committee hearing, some of the disturbing stuff was talked about with the superintendents interfering with the direction with -- of the police chief and the police department. That simply, I mean, that doesn't occur in a normal school district. That's wrong. It's not legal. I don't interfere with police investigations. I would be in trouble for that. So, the police chief acts independently on those stuff. So, when things are referred to our -- for investigation, they take care of all that stuff. I do not interfere with that. There's, first of all, I want a clean investigation. Second, also, just in general, I want to get to the root of the issue. If there's something going on that's illegal, we need to take care of that. So, but no, yeah, I can't interfere in investigations in the first place. So, I think that kind of pulled on some strings, heartstrings at the hearing, but that's an unusual case, and then they should be held accountable for it, you know? If a superintendent directs a police chief to not investigate something with a staff member, well, they need to be in an orange jumpsuit. So, there you go, simple. And I don't look good in orange.
All right, 9D, moving on then. If you have no questions or comments. 9D, the Board will receive legal advice on general counsel regarding pending litigation. Consider authorization of execution of settlement agreement to civil action. This item will be discussed in closed session later this evening. 9E, the Board review and consider adoption of revised board operating procedures outlining the duties of a public official.
I have a question on that. Okay, I'd like to raise a point of information, because I need a little bit of information, more information about the Open Meetings Act. And so, this is slated for the meeting on Monday. It says, and on today's agenda, that the Board will review and consider adoption of revised board operating procedures outlining the duties of a public official, parentheses, this item may be discussed in closed session. The presenters are Justin Ray, Dr. Killian, and Marty Collins-Simpson. So, I do have a concern, because as stated in our agendas, it says that if during the course of a meeting covered by this notice, the Board should determine that a closed session of the Board will be held or required in relation to any item included in this notice, then that closed session, as authorized by Section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code or the Open Meetings Act, will be held at a certain date, time, hour. And then it goes on to say that the only reasons the Board can call such a closed session concerning any and all subjects are for the certain permitted reasons, and they are listed here. So, I guess, counsel, I have a question of information. If, when I read you these sections, if yes or no, does discussing board operating procedures in closed session qualify under this section, yes or no, right? So, the first section.
So, Dr. Blasen, if you'd like legal advice, I need to, it's incumbent upon me to give that to you in closed session.
Okay, then I'll just make a statement, and then I'll come back. Okay, so, Section 551.071 states that for the purpose, this is the first reason why a Board can go into closed session, for the purpose of a private consultation.
If your question is what, because normally, I just, just to save you, are you asking?
I'm sorry, point of order, I'm going to ask, I'm going to finish my statement, and then you can answer. Thank you.
Well, I just realized, I think I might know what your question is.
So, for the first reason that a Board can go into closed session would be for private consultation with the Board's attorney on any and all subjects for matters authorized by the law, which we'll talk about in a minute, or for, I guess, the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct for the attorney themselves that's under the Bar Association. So, for me, that legal consultation, I don't think this was an issue about legal, our legal representation's conduct. And so, the next reason would be for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and that doesn't sound like board operating procedures to me. Section 551.073 is for the purpose of considering a negotiated contract for a prospective gift or donation. Again, doesn't sound like board operating procedures. Section 551.0474 is for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. That was not the stated purpose of our meeting. Section 551.07, excuse me, 7, Section 551.076 is to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel devices. Section 551.0821 is for the purpose of deliberating a matter of public school student personally identifiable information. Section 551.082 is for considering discipline of a public school child. 551.083, for the purpose of considering the standards, guidelines, and terms the Board will follow as it goes through, like consultation with organizations like unions or that kind of group. And the final one is for the purpose of excluding witness or witnesses from a hearing during examination of another witness. So, I have a question, because on March, we went into closed session on June 23rd, 2025, under Agenda Item 8F, at the request of trustee Justin Ray, rather than being discussed in Governance Committee, where we typically have had the discussion about board operating procedures and revisions. And so, we normally do it there, because that's the place where we don't have a quorum, we're able to discuss, and then bring it back to the whole body to be discussed. And so, we did have an email exchanged about that day on June 23rd when we met. So, I'm actually requesting outside counsel to advise the Board, the officers of this Board, because whether we've violated Toma and how we would rectify our actions if indeed we have broken law, this is a formal request. And is there any other action that I would need to take in order to reflect a formal request? There's a precedence, this year, of Board members requesting and utilizing outside counsel of their choice to advise on matters of open meetings. So, I'm clear that it's within my right. However, counsel, how do I formally request this? Is there a form, or do I need to, do you need me to send an email or anything outside of this request at the dais? And the reason I ask for this clarification is because, under a previous superintendent, I made several formal requests at the dais for records related to contracts over $50,000 that I had not seen or approved after a year of board service. I asked for at least three months from the dais and on the record, but my requests were ignored. I finally had to come to the building in person and ask for that to be handed to me in hand. I've also asked for items to be added to the agenda for board meetings over the past school year in public from the dais, where we are conducting official business, and the President has not added them to the agenda despite board policy that states.
Dr. Blasen?
This is Open Meetings Act. Point of information.
Dr. Blasen?
We are allowed to add items. So, my question is this, I'm making a formal request, because I believe we broke Texas Open Meetings Act laws by going into closed session about this item that is on there for a vote on Monday. And so, what I'm asking is that if I can get legal counsel, I'm asking formally, and if I need to send it different way, because I'd like to make an official request for counsel to advise on three, five things. One, did the, did our trustees?
Dr. Blasen, I'm the general counsel, and I give the legal advice.
Okay, I'm here to ask for these questions to be answered.
And so, what I've shared with you, Dr. Blasen, what I've shared with you is that I'll give you legal advice in closed session.
This is not legal advice, this is the questions that I have for outside counsel, because I do have a question, one of them actually comes down to when there's an issue for internal counsel.
But Natalie, these aren't germane to this topic.
It is very germane. We have broken Texas Open Meetings Act to discuss board operating procedures.
That is not a true statement, and it's probably defamatory.
No, what I'm saying is, I need clarification. I've asked you to give me counsel.
And I've offered to talk to you as your lawyer in closed session.
Well, one of the questions I have.
But I will also clarify, once I realized I tried to answer before the soliloquy, what I tried to answer was that I understand now, you're asking which specific section under the Open Meetings Act allows a Board to go into closed session and review board operating procedures, and it's very clearly 551.074. You can go into closed session to discuss the duties of a public official, which is inherently what board operating procedures are.
The appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employer to hear complaints or charges.
Yes, duties of a public officer.
In addition, in addition to that, the other reason you can go into closed session is to consultation with attorney, and there was consultation with the attorney.
Yeah, but that's only, I've read that, and I've, and again, I'm asking for outside counsel, because this is very, one of the questions I have is when you have counsel for the Board.
A single board member does not have the authority to engage outside counsel under our board policy with the, upon consulting with the superintendent. I engage outside counsel. I am the general counsel, and I give, I am the counsel to this Board, and I give advice to this Board. So, I have stated what the Open Meetings Act exception is. That is, if you would like to talk in closed session, I can give you further legal advice. This Board has never gone into closed session, contrary to the Open Meetings Act, and to say that is a lie.
Well, I would like to, one of the questions I had is about when your counsel for the Board and counsel for the district and that fiduciary responsibility to two bodies.
This is not germane to this topic on the agenda.
We need to move on to this topic, because Justin needs to open up the actual topic itself. Justin, go ahead.
Yeah, let me have some introductory comments on the item that we're bringing forth today. Mr. President, the Governance Committee conducted several meetings to review the board operating procedure and make any recommended changes and updates, the most recent meeting being on August 25th. Trustees Heinemann and Combach provided recommended changes, of which the committee will continue to evaluate over subsequent meetings for future BOP recommended changes. Tonight, we bring forth several board operating procedure recommendations. In the draft BOP, you'll notice several language changes that are more of an housekeeping nature. There are two substantive recommendations, which include, one, placing enhanced guidelines on trustee requests for data and information from the administration, most notably ensuring superintendent engagement for any information requests, and that requests for newly created information come from board committees or the Board as a whole. The second substantive recommendation is the inclusion of language prohibiting board members from recording private conversations with other trustees, the superintendent, district staff, and members of the community without their knowledge and consent. Members of the community employees of, and members of the community employees of the district must be able to speak openly and honestly with their elected board members, with the elected board trustees. These provisions are intended to restore and enhance that confidence that's critical to district governance.
I also serve on the Governance Committee, and I actually have zero issues with the content of our board operating procedures. I feel like we have had good discussion in our committee meeting around ways to improve the way we operate. Those are not our duties. Our duties are assigned by Texas Education Code, and this is just our choice of how we will operate together. And so, I do commend the committee for the work done, and I actually very much agree to every point that was made. We still have more issues that have been proposed by other trustees that we have not finished deliberation on, but this one, we managed to get done in time for this meeting. So, I just want you to know that I am supportive, very supportive of the policy that is being proposed, as I was a member of the committee, and we were all in full consensus.
May I take that, since we are having this discussion, that we are, this item is being discussed in open?
Yeah, they put it for closed session. It was not for closed session, but Holly mistyped that on there.
Okay, no worries. Okay, so I may ask.
Just for clarification, in case we need to.
Right, that's why it said "may" instead of "not shall." Yes, that's absolutely, and I think that the question could have just been originally asked, are we, let's, can we stay in open session for the discussion? And the answer would have been yes, and then we could have avoided the last 10 minutes. I do have a comment. Clearly, these changes have been prompted by actions by more than one board member, which has led to the need to make these changes. I ask that, on Monday, if we vote as a Board, the majority of the Board votes to approve these, that the last page, which is a signature page, be completed, documented, and posted on the website along with the board operating procedure, so that the public will have access to see which trustees have actually signed and agreed to the board operating procedures.
I think that's a fantastic suggestion. I also appreciate that this is not in closed session, because I do think we've asked for transparency, and the community asked for transparency, and so I feel like it's great. And the only, the, for me, my wish is only that people don't lie and that people don't threaten harm to me or my family. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm flabbergasted. That's shocking. That's gaslighting. Somebody asked for the definition of gaslighting in the meeting recently. That is gaslighting. It's the truth.
All I know is.
I do know the truth.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just telling you that, yeah, honesty is definitely the best policy, and I appreciate honesty.
I think we'll move on to this point. 9F will be discussed on Monday. The Board consider authorizing superintendent approve personal service agreements under Texas Education Code 11.006. 9G, the Board consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to individual listed here employment. District is under contract terminated. It's further recommended that Board President notify this individual proposed action, terminate a contract pursuant to Texas Education Code.
Code 11.006. 9G, the Board consider approving superintendent's recommendation to give notice to individual listed here employment. District is under contract terminated. It's further recommended that Board President notify the individual of the proposed action and terminate the contract pursuant to 21.211 of Texas Educator Code. This item will be discussed in closed session if necessary. 9I, the Board consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to individual listed here proposed employment. District under probationary contract will be terminated. It's also recommended Board President notify this individual proposed action and terminate her employment pursuant to 21.104 of the Texas Educator Code. This item may be discussed in closed session if necessary. 9J, the Board consider making termination good cause did not happen exist for the individuals listed here in the notice to resign their respective employment contracts. This item may be discussed in closed session if needed. The Board now perceive the discussion portion of the agenda. 10A, the Board discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Again, that'll be discussed on Monday. And I believe that's it. Is there anything else I missed? Seeing none. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, also like those who are viewing from online. May I get a, please get a motion to move in the closed session?
So moved.
I'll second all those in favor. We're now in closed session. We will not return. Thank you very much. You'll have a great evening.